Hello beautiful friends, welcome to Random Thoughts Some Useful. Whether you're taking a drive out for a run or just relaxing at home, this podcast is your go-to for inspiration, insight and real life stories. I'm your host Jen, you can find me on all social platforms at @apothecaringjen. Join me as we explore thought-provoking topics, interview amazing guests and share tips to empower you with life and business hacks. And everything you need to feed your soul, let's dive in. Alright, welcome back to another episode of Random Thoughts Some Useful. Today we're taking a journey from Navy to Newcastle, Oklahoma, my hometown. And this episode will dive into a bit of Newcastle's history, including how it was almost the town that never was. And touch on its connections to World War II. Join us today as Alan Davenport shares his inspiring story of overcoming challenges, including a personal battle with cancer. And discuss the importance of local leadership and civic engagement. This episode is packed with insights that will uplift and motivate you, let's get started. I knew we would have this conversation, we needed to have a conversation and catch up anyway. So I was like, well, I know a lot of the things that we're gonna end up talking about are gonna be helpful to somebody else. So might as well just put you on the spot and make you feel real comfortable.
It's easy.
Alright, so I'm just gonna ask you a couple of different questions, like we'll kind of start about your background, your journey, how you got here. I know you've lived in other places, you didn't grow up in Newcastle, Oklahoma. So I wanted you to just kind of tell me a little bit about that, um, how you got involved in kind of your community service type roles? And what exactly those were and and we'll kind of just go from there.
Well, I grew up, born and raised, East Tennessee. Graduated high school out of Chattanooga and uh, from there I went on to college for a year and was not, didn't much care for taking stupid classes that had to be even, had no interest whatsoever. One of them, you have to have a humanities and I'm taking, I'm going wild, you know?
We have that in common.
Yeah, and so I quit and uh, right, uh, some friends of mine were in contact with military recruiters. And one of them was bound and determined to go in the Navy. And uh, I went up down the list and I talked to all of them and I talked seriously to all of them and became uh, friends with all of them really. And the one thing that intrigued me the most uh, about, and the reason I chose Navy is most of the other branches will send you through boot camp and a training and then to a station and you're pretty much there. I didn't want to spend my military career at Fort Sill, I wanted to see the world. I come from a somewhat uh, poor family and I wanted to go places that I'd heard about. And the Navy gave me that opportunity. I got on the ship and went so far west that it would have been closer to come back east, but from the east. But uh, I got to see Japan, I got to see Hawaii, I got to see Thailand, I got to see Singapore. Places that no way would I've ever been there otherwise, you know? And uh, that was, that was fun, that was good. And when I got out of the Navy and the reason I got out is because it was, uh, the Navy is a great place for a young man or woman. I guess a young person who really has no game plan. And that was me, I had no game plan.
Kind of give you some direction.
And they gave you some discipline, they said, you will be here at such and such a time and I was there. Where when I went to college, especially the last part of my college career, uh, they didn't seem to care if I showed up or not and I didn't. And uh, so it was, it was what I needed, I got a skill set, they gave me my training, I got out. I uh, went back home to East Tennessee and almost got hired in, in northeastern Alabama. But the uh, guy that wanted to hire me couldn't get the rec open through the company. He said, but I got one in Dallas if you'll take that. I said, yeah, I'll go to Dallas. Went to Dallas for a year, uh, and during that timeframe, I was the only single guy in the office. So anything that required out of town, I got it, I was the junior guy, I was the single guy. So I got to go traveling again to exotic places like Muleshoe, Texas, Amarillo, Texas, Midland, Odessa, Texas, you know?
We've traveled the same, same countries.
And uh, uh, one of the places I traveled to is Oklahoma City.
Okay.
An old friend from the Navy was here, so I was hanging out with him and I just started taking as many trips to Oklahoma City as possible. And uh, I had no friends in Dallas because I wasn't there long enough, I was in and out of my apartment and gone again and stuff. So anyway, the job opportunity came for uh, for an Oklahoma City rep and I said, I'll take that. And so I moved up here, I moved up here and my old friend Wes moved away.
Is that when they moved to the Bahamas?
No, that's when they moved to uh, uh, Trigby.
Oh.
Out in the woods.
Okay.
That's when you were like two.
Okay, very small, okay.
Well, uh, no, uh, all three girls were born by then.
That's right, that's right, we were probably about six or so.
You were probably somewhere around in that neighborhood, yeah.
That's right, I do, gosh vaguely remember them living out there.
Yeah, and uh, helped him, helped him build that house.
Oh wow.
Oh, it was, it was hot out there. But anyway, uh, uh, I've been here, been here ever since and ended up retiring from that company after thirty-four years, just short of thirty-four. And uh, during that timeframe, uh, met, married, had kids. It was my, my community access uh, started uh, through some people on you from church. And one of them worked at the library.
Okay.
And she said, I want to do, the library wants to do a summer program, A History of Newcastle. You're a historian of interest, will you take it? And I said, I, let's see what we can do. So the first thing you do when you want to study about a place is you go to the library, check out books on the place. And I found one, McLean County History and I said, alright, now you have to dig it through there and hey, we're about to turn a hundred. You know, two weeks, three weeks will be a hundred years old. So went to the newspaper and they said, well, write a story on it. So I wrote a story on it and they put it in the paper and we, Chamber of Commerce planted a tree out by the post office and we had a big shandig. And uh, the article was released, paper came out and probably twenty-five to thirty people called me and said, you got that story wrong. Well, I just got out this book and they said, yeah, we know about that book, that book's wrong.
Oh, how funny.
And I said, well, uh, okay, you seem to know what it was. And I said, my dad came here in nineteen hundred and my, you know, I've been here since, I went to school here in nineteen twenty. And so I got all these people together one day at the old library. And got them all in the room there together one Saturday morning and I said, here's the book. And I said, yeah, we know about the book, that book's wrong. And I said, then you were here, you tell me.
Yeah.
And they just started talking amongst themselves and I started writing. And at that point I became the unofficial official historian of Newcastle. And uh, it was, it was very intriguing, uh, you know, met a guy that played football for Newcastle in nineteen twenty-seven.
How cool.
Uh, he lived in the house that still had Newcastle Post Office Indian Territory on the front door.
Oh wow.
And uh, so obviously he knew a whole lot about the beginning. I met several others who uh, were born here in, in the teens. Their parents came here on the covered wagon or whatever type deal you know that got here. They got pictures of themselves going to a school when we had the five different little schools instead of the one school. And it, to me, it just tickled me to death to sit and listen to their stories.
Yeah.
And I started uh, writing this stuff down and documenting and now I've helped write uh, two books. That uh, one of the State Historical Society has one of them and uh, the newspaper put out another one, I helped write it out.
Well, that's very cool.
So, huh, the funny part about the, the one that, the Newcastle story is I helped write that book and help gather up pictures and facts and all this other kind of stuff. And the only place my name is mentioned in the book, they misspelled it.
Oh gosh, that's awful. The same happened to dad, he gave a little, you know, perspective story on the military for a local publishing and same thing. But that he was in the army instead of the air force.
Most stronger than a.
Right? Oh man, wow, that is so cool, I, I can't even imagine. So where could somebody find those stories, like are, do you have them published anywhere, I mean, are they?
Yeah, they're real books, the Oklahoma Historical Society has got a uh, Oklahoma Historical Society encyclopedia.
Okay, and it's on Newcastle?
No, it's on Oklahoma.
Okay.
And uh, it's got everything, it's a, it's a two uh, two book edition. And it came out in two thousand and seven with the anniversary of a hundred years of Oklahoma.
Okay.
And it's got every wide spot that ever was and ever is, it's got uh, stories about places that don't exist anymore and uh, the way they narrowed it down was uh, county seats got this many words and the next ever other town got this many words. And if it was a ghost town, so to speak, that exists anymore, they got even less, you know? So I was limited on my number of words, I was uh, they gave me a, it had to start off this way. Newcastle is in McLean County, northwestern part, blah, 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 blah. That, that was, then I had to tell the story from there.
Okay.
So uh,
So you put all of those that Saturday afternoon, all of that?
Pretty much into, I took a whole bunch of stories and combined them into one short story.
Right.
And then when the other book came out that the newspaper, Dar- Darrell Lynchell put together. Uh, a lot of pictures were donated from all over the place and people put pictures in there. And then I told stories also around those pictures and some, filled in some of the blanks and what they did, did and that kind of stuff.
Hi, so where can you get that one, the Pacer?
I, you can ask the Pacer.
Okay.
I don't, there was a original printing and then there was a second printing. That's the, the Encyclopedia of Oklahoma History and Culture. And that's the one where it's just a little short story in there of Newcastle. It's in numerical, alphabetical order, so it's not hard to figure out. But it's got people, places, things, events.
Five local men gave their lives in defense for their country. Another was captured in the Philippines and spent more than three years as a Japanese prisoner. Soon after Japan surrendered, a tornado swept through Newcastle and destroyed the school and much of the business section. A twister touched down the evening of September twenty-fifth nineteen forty-five, moving from southwest to northeast. Formed their own government in the sixties. So what year did you come to Newcastle?
Eighty-two.
Oh, I was just two years old then, yeah. Well, how cool, yeah, I will definitely have to get us a copy of these, these are very cool to have.
You see, that's got all kinds, I mean, you can look up by name anywhere you want to, uh, you know, flip over to tunnel if you wanted to or.
Yeah, yeah, see the history of any of the towns in Oklahoma, that's very cool. What was your first impression of Newcastle coming from Tennessee?
It was, well, it was, and I missed it, it was a small town.
Yeah.
And it ain't that way no more, uh.
Yeah.
I originally from Spring City, Tennessee, which is a little small town, but it's a long way from big city. Although big city's getting there, uh, Newcastle's getting absorbed, eaten, you know, by Oklahoma City. It used to be two different places and now it's just.
All meshes together, yeah.
And uh, I, I missed the older days, but by the same token, I liked the water coming out there now better than I did when I first got here.
Okay, that's good.
You don't have to run it for twenty minutes to get the red out of it now, it's just, you know, it was nasty to begin with.
Oh wow, wow.
Well, water out here is disgusting, it's, you know?
Really?
Yes.
You feel like it is?
Yeah, it's very hard.
That is true.
You know, it'll eat your pipes, eat your uh, faucets and stuff.
Yeah, that is true, you have to do a water softener and stuff on it, yeah.
And uh, so that's kind of a pain, but uh, of course, when I first got here, there wasn't a red light in town and now they're all over the place.
Right, yeah, so yeah, that was eighty-two, I mean, gosh, there wasn't, I mean, thirty-seven was still too late for sure. Cause that didn't happen until ninety-five-ish or something, sixty-two was too.
Yeah, but that's the official uh, dates and stuff of incorporation of Newcastle.
Town that almost never was.
The post office was here.
And so that's because of the annexing from Oklahoma City, so it almost didn't happen until the citizens got together in sixty-two.
Mm-hmm, and actually with a little help from Blanchard, Oklahoma City used to be right to the side of Highway thirty-seven.
No.
Yeah, Oklahoma City City Limits was right to the other side of Highway thirty-seven.
Really?
And the reason they came that far and stopped is because during sixty-two Blanchard annexed up Highway seventy-six. And then down eastward on thirty-seven all the way to the river. So past Main Street, just out in the field there, you know, they annexed all of that, but only just, you know, the widest of the street.
Yeah.
Then they annexed the proper deal on the side of the street, just the street, but that line stopped Oklahoma City. And the reason Oklahoma City did it was they wanted that turnpike to go through, the H E Bailey.
Okay.
And a lot of people out here couldn't care less about the turnpike. And so they annexed and they overextended themselves is what they did because they couldn't provide fire, police, water, all these government entities, you know? To this side of, yeah, and it wasn't till ninety-two till they backed off.
Wow.
They went to the other side of the river and Newcastle annexed that part.
Really?
Yeah.
I had no idea it was even that close, yeah, not that long ago. How interesting. Uh, my uncle at one point had said that, you know, it didn't really grow out here for the longest time because the uh, the legends on all of the maps were right over Newcastle. So nobody really knew that there was much out here kind of type thing, that maybe it kind of sheltered it for a few years. Yeah, you know, hid it away. Wow.
But a lot of, like, the oaks grew when uh, forced busing hit Oklahoma City. A lot of people left Oklahoma City because their kids were being, you know, bussed all the way across town and that kind of stuff. And it was just, it was, it was just a mess to be in the middle of that stuff. And so they moved out here, well, that was all fine and dandy except building all those houses stressed the city government in Newcastle. They weren't ready for that, you know?
Huh, kind of like now the problem they're having with the Pooh Castle skid marks, have you heard this?
Hell, no.
No, 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 the Pooh Castle skid marks because of the smell that happens, yeah, that's been, I guess because of the, again, the the population increase is so rapid that they weren't prepared for it, yeah, yeah.
And that's, the highways, you know, you don't put nine hundred people on Northwest Sixteenth.
Yeah.
Cause it's only wide enough for six.
Yeah.
There are all those bridges that are crossing the turnpikes that were built in sixty-two.
Right.
When it was dirt road coming up to each side of them and maybe three cars a day went across them, what a problem.
Yeah, now it is.
Yeah, now, I'm just waiting on my head on death on one of them.
Oh goodness gracious, yeah, yeah, Jake, whenever he was volunteer fireman, there was an uh, older woman that um, probably shouldn't have been driving, but she, gosh, something had, I don't know if I'm getting stories confused, but there's something bad happened with her ankles, like her feet were totally severed. And just awful, but right there going off of, what is it? Twenty, it had to have been, yeah, sixteenth, yeah, for sure, yeah, but anyways, he responded to an accident there, was telling me about how awful it was. Front of the school. I remember that same school, yeah, that was, it wasn't the front, when we were there, it was kind of the, the back, the end of it. They connected with the freshman hall that used to.
Well, that's broke up in decades.
Okay.
You know?
Pick back up football team, what do you mean?
Well, we had a football team in the twenties and then we disbanded it and didn't pick it back up until uh, the early seventies to those guys.
Why?
Couple reasons, one, we didn't have bodies uh, to even play football, we didn't have enough. But uh, a lot of people at one time thought it was, that kids get hurt, you know, that kind of deal, so. You probably don't remember T G N Y.
Yes, I do, yeah, yeah, I was old enough and this Puckett, Mrs. Puckett, she lived across the street from Mamaw. Eighty-third, ninety-nine, I was freshman in college. I remember seeing it on the, on the TV and of course trying to call everybody and the phones were down.
Oh yeah, jammed up big time.
So other than historian, what other community involvement projects have you?
Well, uh, because of that, I became uh, I won't say popular, but known. You know, because I spoke at school and I spoke at uh, senior citizens and various different little clubs or whatever. You know, people brought me in and I put together a little slideshow. Uh, I need to update it, put it PowerPoint, but I haven't, but uh, I got asked to run for city council and was hesitant, but I did. And got elected of all things on April Fool's Day. Sure, if that's whatever that means, it's a fact.
That's funny.
April first nineteen ninety-seven.
How funny.
And I did four years as a city councilman.
Okay.
And then uh, uh, some people that were running and wanted to step in and they were competent people and I was tired. And uh, being a city councilman will beat, if you're good at it, it will beat you to death.
Really?
Because that means you're putting the work into it.
Okay.
And uh,
What all does it entail being a city councilman?
Very informed on what's going on, number one. It's very informed on what's not going on, uh, as in what structures and what infrastructure that is needed and it's not there and we don't have the money for. We got to decide which one of these do we do first, which one makes the most sense.
Okay, so kind of like city planning in a way, yeah.
Planning is part of it, you know, it's not just going to meetings and saying yes or no, you, you need to be aware of what people are wanting.
Yeah.
Uh, you need to be able to look them in the eyes and say, I can't do that, here's why.
Yeah.
And you need to be informed, like I said, that when you say here's why, you need to know why.
Yeah.
Uh, most individuals will appreciate that, of course, there's some you can never please.
Oh yeah, for sure.
And uh, once you learn to quit trying to please them, it makes it a little easier, but uh, and there's some who, who feel that just because they know you, then they can uh, tell you they want their street paved and want nobody to tractor rain out there the next morning.
Right.
And so, a lot of frustrating work involved with that because you can't make everybody happy.
Yeah.
After a while, you just need a break.
For sure, I can imagine.
And when you have good people that can take over for you, let them do it till they get burned out.
Yeah, for sure.
Jerry Petty took over my spot and uh, two years into it, he pulled me aside and said, why didn't you stop me?
Why didn't you tell me, the nightmare this was? Because it's needed.
Yeah.
Yeah, you don't want to discourage people from doing it.
And you weren't quality people doing it, you know? If uh, you're not, you'd better not make money off of it.
Right.
Cause then obviously you're doing something wrong.
Right, right, which is kind of where we're at in the world.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is so hard to, well, and that's another reason that I was like, okay, well, I want to kind of make this a podcast. Because to me, state and lo- local government is the most important, that's where you really make a difference. And I feel like so many people don't realize that, what was the statistic you gave me the other day at the funeral? Uh, or, or when was it, I talked to you, maybe on the phone or something, but it was, you said, uh, recent election was decided by two votes?
Yes, yes, um, a runoff between Jonathan Wilk and Mike Whaley was done the twenty-seventh. And it uh, ended up a, Wilk won by two votes, sixteen, sixteen hundred and sixty-eight for the winner, sixteen hundred and sixty-six.
Wow.
For a second place.
Wow.
Two votes.
Two vote difference, yeah.
Two vote difference.
People don't realize, wow.
Being that close, they go into an automatic, uh, I say automatic, uh,
Like recount, make sure it's accurate.
Yeah, and uh, pretty much turned out that close, yeah.
Yeah, huh, yeah, huh, well, I mean, is there anything that you can, from your perspective, I mean, anything that you could say to encourage young people today, I mean, what, from my perspective, I'm kind of cynical, to be honest, I think it's all kind of a dog and pony show that, that we can, we can exercise our right, which we should because of, out of respect for me, is my perspective. However, I'm not certain that it really makes a difference beyond the state and local level. So I feel like there's probably at least a handful of people out there that have the same kind of perspective that deters them from participating in state, local.
I uh, I told people when I was on the city council twenty years ago and I will tell everybody the same thing today. That you do not have the right to be involved in your government, you have the responsibility to be involved in your government.
There you go.
Completely different meaning.
Yeah.
You have the responsibility, that is part of your job.
Yeah.
To know, to be intelligent, uh, I hate people who, who vote because well, we, right now in precedent, if you tell me you're voting for Kamala because she's female, or you tell me you're not voting for Trump because he's uh, male or any, or whatever.
Right.
Then I'm gonna call you stupid.
Yeah, that's emotional, it's not informed, it's not for the better, good.
And there's people that will vote for her because she's a woman and there's people that will not vote for her because she's a woman.
Right, it's not about policy, it's about feelings, yeah, biases.
That's absolutely, and that's shallow.
Yeah.
I, I read a joke the other day that said, uh, voting for Kamala because she's female is the same as eating a cat turd because it looks like a tushy robe.
That is so true, it's such a great analogy, oh my gosh, it is, it is.
And uh, if that is the reason you're voting, then you don't need to vote, to be honest with you.
Yeah.
Because you ain't smart enough to vote.
And you're influencing policy because of your vote and he has holding the rest of us hostage, yeah. Yeah, and especially when you don't get out there and, and counter vote, right, yeah.
And I, uh,
It's almost like there's more of a need to vote just to counter vote.
Yeah.
Than there is to, for anything.
And that's, that's not good either.
Right, no.
Um,
Because we're not doing it proactively, we're responding in a way out of fear almost, okay, well, we've got to do this because this might happen.
And uh, Jean Reed, one of the current Newcastle City Council members, him and I laugh about this all the time. He said, when people run up to him and start saying, you know what you know how to do down there at City Hall? He says, well, you know, Purcell is where you can fill out the form and you can run for city council.
There you go, yeah, exactly.
So you can. And uh, it's funny how many people don't, uh, don't want to step up to the plate, they want you to step up the plate.
Yeah.
And that's where I, I really argue with those people. Be informed, be intelligent, know what you're doing, uh, and do it.
Yeah, which is intimidating, I mean, because for, again, it's public service, you're not getting an ROI on your time and energy investment and you have to be, you know, on the up and up to, to be in that role. At, at least you would think that you would have that type of integrity, right? You would hope.
They told me I was getting paid under the table, I crawled under every table in town, didn't find any money.
We know those that have.
But it's, it, there is a responsibility that comes with it and it's, it's your responsibility. And I'll say that to anybody standing in front of me, it's your responsibility.
Right, right. How did your experience in the Navy um, shape any of that kind of perspective mentality? Do you, do you feel like that had, that contributed?
I, yes, and the thing I liked about, the thing that actually the Navy did for me, uh, as far as my, not mentality, but my outlook, I mean, my outlook, is I saw things from a lot of different perspectives. Because I was in big city, San Diego, I was, uh, I knew people in small town, old. I was, uh, I knew people in small town, El Cajon, California, and, you know. Uh, didn't know anybody in a small town like Newcastle, but I knew different areas. Uh, I spent time in great northwest and I spent time in the great southeast. Uh, and I saw different needs, different wants. Uh, people in Key West Florida were completely different from Seattle, Washington. They're on flat ground down there and they're about this, they're about inch off the water, uh, literally, it rains an inch and it floods. You know, uh, it's eighty-five, ninety degrees every day in Key West and eighty-five and ninety percent humidity. Go to Seattle and it's fifty-fifty, there's fifty degrees and fifty percent humidity.
Very similar, yeah.
You know, a little, you got a little lean than everyone in your stance, cause you're on the side of a hill somewhere. And, uh, this, you see problems that Seattle had or San Diego had and you see. Resolutions that San Diego did and that kinda stuff and you, and then that gives you a ideal of. What to do even on a smaller level like Newcastle.
I'm so glad you said that because I, um. It frustrates me. To see problems and no resolution and see resolutions for the same problem in other states. And I'm like, what's the problem? To me, it seems very simple, why are we not adopting these programs?
And I, I hate seeing the same stupid mistake made over and over and over and over. And the whole United States is built on, we'll start here and then we'll bring in. The low rent stuff and we'll, the upper class will move out. Then we'll bring in lower rent stuff, upper class will move out, then we'll bring in lower rent stuff. And it, which is happening to Newcastle, the reason Newcastle been overtaken by Oklahoma City is because Southwest. Seventy-fourth ain't near as good a place as it was forty years ago. Or even thirty years ago.
Yeah, they're moving out to smaller districts that are safer for their kids supposedly. Let me say that because my best friend Kirby, you remember Kirby, our pitcher from high school, okay? So she, you know, was from New York originally and she ended up going in. Polaroid scholarship up there to division two, whatever, play ball for two years and then came to U C O and finished her career and. Got her degree, she's a nurse and then nurse practitioner now and has kids. Her daughter is fourteen, freshman, they were in the Mustang School District and. There were several instances that happened right there at the end of the school year where. Um, maybe one kid did take their life or two, something like that in that school district and then maybe one, another one tried or something like that and so she decided. No, we're done, we're moving out, back to, out to Newcastle, you know, she came here as a freshman. And, um, anyway, so her daughter, uh, great ball player, Kirby didn't play ball and softball until her freshman year. Yeah, isn't that incredible? Yeah, yeah, and just work ethic too. So strong, but, so her daughter is about two inches taller than she was her. Senior year of high school and she's a freshman this year and she's also a pitcher. So she's pitching for Crosley now and she's actually their ace, they, as a freshman.
Coach the softball?
Yes, yeah, he didn't retire from coaching softball, thank God. So, um, yeah, so he, and last, last year, the year after, or year before? No, last year, he won state, we were there, yeah. Uh, after all the controversy with baseball and all of that, right, yeah, so he went on, the, the team won state last year. Uh, we were, we were there, they played at OU, it was incredible, it was so fun to be there. Uh, on the twenty-fourth, I'm gonna throw out the first pitch for cancer awareness, so if you wanna come that night. Yeah, come, it's the twenty-fourth, uh, you have to, I'm not sure exactly, the game usually starts at five, something like that. So I'll get all the details and let you know, but.
You have to do that, cause that's what I was gonna do, drop myself a note here and.
So that would be great, so it's just cancer awareness in general, uh, but Crosley, not long ago, he asked me, um, if I'd be interested in doing that and I was like, of course. That would be, that would be great, I'm a little worried about getting over the plate. Maybe like an accurate throw, you know, but. So, but that'll be, that'll be fun, that'll be good, it'll be good to.
Well, I need to be there, I'm a cancer survivor too.
Exactly, exactly, and it's for anyone, that's why I mentioned it for sure, yeah, so, and I think it would be great.
I started drinking this stuff. After my big surgery. I was, it, it, it took a lot, a lot out of me, you know, and physically, literally. Uh, but I was drinking Gatorade. I mean, I could drink Gatorade and I could tell you exactly where the Gatorade was in my body. I don't know if you ever felt any of that stuff.
Well, I have been dealing with some, uh, lymphedema, lymphedema in this arm quite a bit, I haven't drank Gatorade. But any other kinda sugar that I drink, it goes straight to my arm.
You know where it's at? And, um, when I got a little bit of my strength back and past that point. Instead of drinking the high calorie, sugar infested stuff, I started drinking this. Which is zero calories and all that kinda stuff, but it's got all the electrolytes in it.
Nice, okay.
And then I was, it made me feel better, it gave me strength and stuff. And then as I went along, I got to just loving this, the taste, there's several of them I don't like, but I love the lemon and the kiwi. And, uh, I just, one day I drank a kiwi and one day I drank a lemon, you know, that kinda deal. It just, it.
The electrolytes, yeah, those really do make a difference.
Which ten years ago, I didn't know what electrolyte was. And still not sure what they are, I just.
Yeah, me either, um, honestly, I don't, I haven't really put enough time and energy into, like, really investigating that. Which I do in a lot of things, but for that, there are, there are some things that I just accept, you know, like chemo, that was one thing. Like, I don't know the names of the drugs that they've given me, I just, I didn't wanna be there anyway, I had to accept it. So I was just like, okay, whatever you gotta do, do it, I don't need to know the details.
They didn't spell it.
Yeah, no, people ask me all, all the time, I'm like, I don't, I don't know, I don't, I don't have a clue what it is, you know what I mean, so. Although recently I have been, um. I'm at a point, I finished, you know, six rounds of chemo, everything's great, I mean, just major praise, un- unbelievable miracles have happened, right? Um, so now it's a matter of, okay, what do I, do I continue this route or this route or this route? And trying to figure out, make those decisions.
I can sit here and argue for or against any one of them routes.
Argue against any one of those routes, or, or for, yeah, yeah.
Because somebody took this route and it worked, somebody else took that route and it didn't. There's no way.
It's so hard to, to figure out, I, the only thing I can. Do at this point is, is way my previous experience, there is a drug that I've been on previously that they want me to go back on. Uh, uh, hormone suppressant, Lupron, um, which I was in while we were, I was taking while we were in Germany. Had four rounds of it, uh, it was a three month long injection and so for, you know, better part of a year and a half, I was, I was under. Hormone suppressant then, um, and. It isn't ideal, but it's maybe, you know, better for some because it's, it's convenient. It was an injection that I took that lasted three months, I didn't have to take a pill every single day, which is the other route that they're suggesting. Um, and then it, it wasn't hysterectomy either, which is the other option. And so it's, you know, very definitive there, I have a holistic doctor that doesn't recommend any of it. He recommends more rounds of chemo if needed before he would recommend any surgery or suppressant. So, you know, there's all this conflicting everything and.
And again, this, here's an example of yes, and here's also an example of no, and it's same route.
Exactly, yeah, so hard to know.
Ironically, when I got sick, when I got, uh, diagnosed with bladder cancer, uh, a lady down the street. Almost same time, I mean, within weeks. And, uh, her and I got to talking and, uh, she says, what are you gonna do? And I said, well, I, uh, I. What, I gotta accept the fact that it's here, cause I felt great. Yeah, I, no pain or nothing, it was the annual checkup. And, uh, I said, I, actually, I think they made a mistake, you know, so I went to another doctor. And another doctor and another doctor. And all of them come back with the same answer. Uh, they gave you different options on what to do with it. But, uh, I'll say, all, all of them had surgery. All of them said, the only way with that bladder cancer is we gotta cut it down, that's simple, there's no magic pill. The only thing that was semi-close to magic pill was some, uh. L B Q J R D B, you know, I had twelve letters on it, you know, which one of them was Botox, one of them was a B that stood for botox, the only thing I know. K G B R K M W.
My goodness.
Which was a real, uh, uh. Let's see, what about, the, uh, the, the injection of it was so, uh. Humbling, that's a good word. Because it, uh, in my bladder, a tube. One way to get the tube there, you know.
Goodness gracious, yeah.
So it, and then it filled my bladder full of this, it was like, uh. Thick paint maybe, or something, that's, but pudding, it's like pudding. And I had to literally lay on my back for fifteen minutes, flipped to my left side, fifteen minutes. Flipped to my stomach fifteen minutes, my right side for fifteen minutes. I was, I felt like a chicken on a rotisserie, you know? I'd leave the doctor's office, get in the back of the truck and lay down on my back all the way home, then I'd, you know, come in the house, lay down on my side, you know? And nothing takes as long as fifteen minutes while you're watching fifty, while you're watching the clock. And when that didn't work, that was the only other choice, it was yank her out. So, I got me a battle scar from right above my belly button. On down and. And, uh, it's, uh, but it took. They did what they did with me, the lady down the street, uh, didn't survive, she's gone.
Oh, goodness.
And yet we both got diagnosed within the same amount of time roughly and we talked about what route, what was gonna do and that kinda stuff and.
Did she do a different route?
She, I don't know the full details, but she did, uh, she did more chemo.
You did do chemo?
No, uh. They, they said chemo, there's no need, it's not gonna work, this.
Did she do surgery?
Uh, not till it's too late and it's spread. And I don't know wh- where she was when they found hers versus where I was. Uh, they got it twice, the first time. It was, uh, level two, cause it, it was, uh, he said, picture a piece of cauliflower. With roots and it had grown through your bladder, well, they cut that out first time and sewed it back up. Two years I was good, then popped back up and he's, they said, no, it's got to come out now, so. But fortunately, when they took mine out, uh, my bladder out, they gave me a, uh, they took some of my intestines and put it in there in its place. So I don't have a bag.
Nice, and that's doing well.
Nine years good.
That's incredible, wow, yeah, you, you're right, walking miracle, yeah.
Uh, it's been, it's been a blessing or, or whatever, you know?
Yeah, no, I, I understand that, you know, and I, um, in the beginning of my diagnosis, I. I did a little bit of research here and there, again, I'm not, I'm not one to, to do that either, I'm not one to go to a support group or. You know, any of those things, because for one, um, I, I think it's ill, I should, it should be illegal for them to even give you a sentence. A death sentence, in my opinion, like, they've given me three to five years to live and I think that's horrible. Anyone else would succumb to that, you know what I mean, I'm like, okay, whatever, you don't know my God, you don't know me, you know? But.
Like you said, you, you quit now?
Yeah, is that what I'm supposed to do? So I'm supposed to, like, how do you manage, I only have, you're planning to die in three to five years. What, how does that work?
And you shouldn't be planning on that anyway, as far as, you know, paperwork and that kinda stuff, you know, you know, write the will out when you're twelve, even if you live to be a hundred, you know? So, uh, it's.
It's, I don't accept, I say it all the time, accept the diagnosis, do not accept the prognosis, because they don't know, they don't know. They can give you the statistics, they can give you the, this is the norm or whatever, but.
What happened to this person, but here's what's happening to you, not the same thing. Uh, that's, yeah, you just never say never.
No, no, yeah.
I got a good friend of mine who just, uh. He, he's battling back and he's, he's. He was at OU Med. Three months, I guess, on his back, one night he actually coded three times. And now he's mowing the yard. And that was. Three months ago.
See, that's incredible, what do you, from an outsider's perspective, do you see anything that has been a game changer for him? That, that has been? Nothing, nothing different, he hasn't changed anything, he hasn't?
The only thing, uh, again, just not giving up. Cause I think the nurses, cause they're, they deal with. Medical stuff all day long, they're a little, they have to be cold-hearted.
Yeah, a little jaded.
A little jaded, a little shield put up between them and, you know, uh. I think they had him just waiting on him to, to go.
Sometimes that can be a motivator.
You know, and he, uh, I think his, uh, his faith did a lot for him. I'd love to say that his. Trends and church and stuff gave him encouragement, uh, and I think we did, you know, but again. We've done that to other people who, you know, passed on. You know, God's will's gonna be the end of it anyway, we're, none of us getting out of this world alive. It's just, are we gonna be forty-four, are we gonna be sixty-nine, are we gonna be eighty-eight?
Yeah, exactly, yeah, you know, um. That was the first time I'd seen Brother Bruce since, you know, diagnosis and any of that, mom and dad go to church there, I, I don't, um, but. He, it was really good to get to talk to him and, you know, I, I thanked him for. He said, you know, we've been praying for you, and I said, absolutely, I felt every prayer, you know? And I do believe wholeheartedly in the power of prayer and collective consciousness, and that's kinda been my challenge this whole time, to be honest. The biggest challenge for me through all of this diagnosis and, and getting better, has been dealing with other people and their fear. And doubt and.
Well, there's a lot of unknowns. Uh, even, uh, in, in mine and your situation. I didn't know where you were physically, uh, emotionally, mentally. I kinda knew where your dad was and I knew that he didn't wanna, it was stick his head in the sand, so to speak. And which I understand, I mean, I would been out there with him. I know kinda where your mother's stance was, especially when she was going through it herself. So she had to be dog cussing herself and, and the world and everything else, because now a girl and, you know, et cetera, et cetera, so. I kept in touch with you through Wes. Because he, him and Gary were better than Alan and Gary were, or Tyler or whatever, known each other longer, et cetera, yeah, yeah. And so, uh, indirectly hung on to where he was. But, but one day, when, uh, your dad and I went that one, went down and visited Wes for, uh, a, a day. And we, you know.
I kinda remember you guys doing that, I'm so glad you did, yeah, tell me more about that, three hour, three hour ride down there?
Yeah, and, and during that timeframe, obviously. You, and the other kids came up and, but it was pretty much, he, he, he didn't say it. But I could tell they wanted to discuss it and. I understood that completely.
Dad's hard because he doesn't, for one, he doesn't understand, he doesn't know, he doesn't have the medical terminology and the background that mom and I do, you know what I mean? And so, he just gets very lost in translation, if you will, and so it is really hard for him, cause he doesn't, he just doesn't know what's going on.
He can't fix it.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not the alternator on your car. You know, it's not, he can't handle it and, and I understand that. And so, you know, that's. We briefly talked about you three and I two and then we looked out the window and said, mine ain't that pretty over.
Yeah, no, I do, I do, it's, it's been, I know it's been hard, I can't, I don't even wanna imagine, think. Hopefully I never have to with my own, you know what I mean? But at the same time. They're the most religious people I know and the most fearful people I know, it's like, you guys. What are we doing? What are we doing, you know what I mean? And that was what I got to kinda briefly talk with the, with Brother Bruce about, is how.
Ain't he got the perfect name for a preacher?
I know.
Think you're not a priest or a, you know.
Right, oh my gosh, that would be awful, wouldn't it?
This is rabbi Christian, what?
What? Does have a sense of humor, doesn't he? I love it, I think it's great, but. Uh, just to, you know, just to thank him for one, he said, uh, the prayer group. That, so my doctor added me to the prayer group initially, um. She goes to church there and she said, you know, my, the church has a, a prayer group there, or a, a cancer ministry there that I, you know, if with your permission, I'd love to. To add you to, and I said, absolutely, please do. Uh, Dennis's is their, their name, so Greg and Lydia Dennis. Uh, they were physicians at Mercy Hospital for twenty-plus years, they met in residency, and he's from New, or from Tuttle. And they have Vibrant Life, uh, direct care over, um, off of thirty-seven, closer to Tuttle, it wasn't Mustang. His name is Greg, and her name is Lydia. And they, they recently divorced, unfortunately, and he started, he had started his podcast throughout their, um. The, I guess the time that they, they started Vibrant Life, I think he maybe started it right at the time that he. That they had started that business, she kinda went out on her own first, and then he ended up following her. And so his podcast is Fit R, Fit RX. And so he calls himself like a, a biohacker and a health optimizer, and you know, those kinda things, he's much more proactive, where she's. Doing more cosmetic type stuff, like botox and different things like that, so he and I are much more in alignment. And, um, that's where I was going for the ozone treatments and the vitamin C and stuff like that, but. He, um, why did I start telling you about them?
I don't know how we got on them, you know. Church prayer group?
Yes, prayer group, prayer group, so anyways, he was like, we need, he, somebody had come to him the other day and said, hey, we need to pray for Jennifer, and he said. No, we need to praise for Jennifer, she has told us many times exactly how to pray for her. They'll reach out through this group, you know, they, they send me uh, cards monthly, and they send me a, a devotional and just encouragement and that kinda stuff. You know, at one point, they had asked, you know, what are the specifics and how can we pray for you, and I told them exactly, I was very frustrated at this time. I was like, my biggest challenge is overcoming, I feel like I'm swimming up, upstream, all day long, every day. Just constantly shielding all the doubt and fear and, and people literally speaking death upon me with their tongue, and that is. I'm so adamant about speaking life and death.
Yes.
It's, it's.
Don't walk up to somebody, go, well, how you, uh, you know, what are you gonna do for the next year, you know, have you ever tried that?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yes, um.
I hate to promote it because I don't know, but I do know that.
Definitely helps ward things off. I know it does, turmeric is, uh, specifically responsible for anti-inflammatory.
Yeah.
And ginger as well, and your immunity and all of that, so, yeah, absolutely.
You know, I, I've told, uh, and a lot of other cancer people have told me.
To take it, yeah, that it helps a lot. Did you do any other alternative stuff, like turkey tail or any of that kinda mushroom blends or? Ben, Ben does all, or?
My whole time was, was denying the fact that it was happening.
Well, and this was nine, eleven years ago, right, so.
First one was in uh. First surgery was in twelve. And it was. Fifteen was, uh, yeah, a, a Memorial Day of twenty fifteen, I was in the hospital.
Okay, that it come back.
Just, they just finished the surgery, but I was in the hospital, so it was that timeframe, late April.
Wow, so wow, we started the coffee shop, you were recovering from all of that. You're one of my biggest supporters up there, I appreciate you so much.
Don't drink coffee that much.
I know, right, you did, yeah, it was amazing, I loved that, that was such a great experience. Bittersweet experience, but it was, gosh, there were so many incredible parts of that.
In the, the, the side part about all that is I was, uh, during the recoup timeframe. Uh. Two real interesting and, and encouraging things happened to me. Uh, when I was healthy enough to actually get up and walk around and all that kinda stuff again, I got a phone call from an ex-customer of mine, I was retired. And he said, uh, we need you. Would you be interested in coming up here to the state capital and holding down a seat for six months? He said, here, here's, I'm in it right now, but I'm, the company's moving me to a different spot for future stuff. And we just need the last of this. Uh, contract, we need to put a, a skill set that, that you got into the seat to fulfill the contract, and here's what we're doing, and he said, it's. He said, really truly, it's boring, goes, you don't have a thing to do hardly, just sit here. And I said, yeah, and so, that six months turned into twenty-four, which was extremely good because it got me moving. And uh, income didn't hurt either, you know, and uh, Danny Waters ran into me one day at. Gas station, he said, you're who I'm looking for. I said, what? He said, I need you. To be on the board of directors for all these things round up, will you be interested? Yeah, I'm interested, what are you talking about? He said, there's no money, you're not getting paid for this, here's what you do, blah, blah, blah. And I've been on that now for nine years.
Wow.
And it's been a fun, encouraging, uh, rewarding, uh, outfit to be part of.
Yeah.
And uh, it's, it's, it, it sometimes frustrating, cause then people won't listen to do exactly what I say, you know. They got their own mind.
What? What?
I said this and now you're telling us.
What kinda cool projects have you got to be a part of in that?
Um.
Or events or?
What we, what we do is all OEC, I, I say all, big hunk of OEC customers. Round up their electric bills to the next dollar.
Okay.
So instead of you paying ninety-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents, you pay a hundred. That extra seventy-two cents or whatever goes into a fund. Uh, if you get hit, even at the worst possible get, the most would be, it's eleven dollars and eighty-eight cents a year. If you get lucky, and at the minimum, it's twelve cents a year, that, all that money every month goes into a pot, separate fund. And it's about twenty-two thousand dollars a month, of your quarter, my twenty-eight cents, you know, that kinda stuff. None of us have missed a meal because of.
Yeah.
But we have this twenty-something thousand dollar pot that we can award grants out of. Uh, we just bought the city of Newcastle Police Department bulletproof shields, so they can, uh. If they have to advance into a barricaded position, they have something to protect themselves with. This came from a couple of years ago. Uh, it was actually Blanchard, but Newcastle responded also on Highway seventy-six, a guy had, uh. Gone under his ex-wife's or ex-girlfriend's or something house, uh, right there on the highway. And barricaded himself in there with her, held her hostage, uh, he ended up shooting, uh, and wounding a Blanchard police officer. And uh, it, it, it ended bad for him and the hostage. Uh, but, uh, he killed her, then they killed him or something, I don't know the details, anyway. But they were stuck outside because it's, it was a house, open land, you know, not even a tree to hide behind, up close. And they had no way of safely approaching the house. In whichever way, you know, somebody stuck their head up, he fired a shot at them.
Yeah.
So, uh, two years ago, we bought one for the city of Newcastle, and then this last month, uh, we bought the other one. So now they have two, and they can actually, the, the shields that you see and the rifle, uh. Raided, so you know, a high, you know, thirty ought six or whatever, uh, bullet bounces off of them, and they can actually advance safely up to a situation like that. Uh. Gary Norman and Toby, the assistant chief, Kobe Harvard, um. He wrote the grant up and I pushed it through, and we got it, got it done, and uh, with a prayer that we'd never have to use them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, a couple of years ago, one of the first ones that I pushed through was for the fire department. And it was, uh, we bought, uh, swift water rescue equipment. And it's ropes that float and things like this, you know, cause all we had from the fire department perspective was, you know. John in his lasso or something, we didn't have any fresh, uh, uh, fast water, uh, rescue equipment. And when we pushed it through, I felt kinda stupid because where is there fast water?
Oh, it floods around here like crazy though.
And at the time, the Canadian needed to be mowed, you know, one of them, droughts. But it was, you know, September, August, one year, well, the next May, the South Canadian is twelve miles wide. And going ninety miles an hour, it rained in Amarillo and, and Elk City, and I mean, it was.
All the way here, yeah.
And some idiot somehow or another, down off of Highway nine, just north of the I thirty-five bridge. Got himself stuck out in the middle of that fast water, and somebody saw him, hurt him, whatever. And Newcastle responded, and that equipment saved that guy's life.
Wow, how cool.
You know.
How cool.
In fact, when they got to him, uh, the only way they could've got to him, it was way too far for a ladder or anything of that nature, you know. Was this, uh, and the, uh. This fast water rescue equipment.
Yeah.
You know, the ropes and stuff and, and the different things, uh, cause they couldn't swim to him, you know, there's, there's a whole lot of cakes.
Yeah.
You know, involved, and when they got him, and they got to him, uh, he was hung up on a, uh, log jam. And he didn't wanna let go, and they had to, two farmer out there having to fight him, you know. And uh, they finally get him loose and off of that, and went, right after they get him off of that, that log pile bust, and it's an ADA.
Wow, yeah.
It's an ADA somewhere. And had they been twenty minutes later, he'd been an ADA.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
And not alive.
Yeah.
So that was rewarding to.
Very cool, wow.
But we, uh, we, uh, definitely, it's, uh, we bought, uh. Fire department a new Jaws of Life.
Mm-hmm.
Thing, and they had to use it shortly thereafter on Highway seventy-six, you know. And it helped save a person's life, can't say that did, but got him out of the car before the car blew up or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh.
Incredible.
And we do other, it's, uh, we've, we've put new roofs on some, a little old lady's house who came forward to, we've, uh. We've secured up things along the way for people, uh, we built wheelchair ramps for, uh, disabled older people.
Very nice.
You know, different things like that, so.
Yeah, how do you, uh, determine who you're gonna help? Is there like a, an application or, where somebody can recommend?
Uh. OEC, uh, OKC, OKCOOP dot, or, or Operation Roundup.
Okay.
And it's for, uh, individuals or, or businesses, now, when I say businesses, it's only, uh, nonprofits.
Okay.
False teeth, uh, glasses, and, uh, hearing aids for people.
Uh-huh.
We have a, a group that works with us on that, the Norman Lions Club takes care of most of the people in Norman that need glasses, and we give them ten thousand a year.
Nice.
The Vet Corner down here in Newcastle, we give them ten grand a year. Uh, there's another one over in, uh, in Norman, that's a, a vet, volunteer vet thing, we give them ten grand a year. Um, there are only about four or five places that get that much. We try to spread the wealth, so every fire department in our footprint. Gets four grand a year, if they ask for it.
Yeah.
And every police department gets four grand a year, if they ask for it. We generally don't do Norman or more, because four thousand to Norman is like a spit in a bucket, you know, it's. They don't need it, they're nothing, you know, uh, we try to make good use of the money, and, uh. But Washington and Dibble, you know, places like that, four thousand's twice their budget.
Yeah, yeah.
And, uh, you know, we might've just, Washington, a couple of years ago, had a big gas. Oil field blowout or something down there, and it rained nastiness down on them. And it ruined all of their protective gear, this oil dripping on them stuff, they got the situation handled. But their helmets and their jackets and all of their firefighting equipment was now no longer up to standard. And so we bought them all new stuff.
Wow.
And, uh.
That's incredible.
But, uh, and you never even know you gave.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
You never even missed it.
Yeah.
You know, you may pay an extra ninety-nine cents, or you may pay an extra penny, but you're getting it back in community grants.
Right, right, it's really gonna help, yeah.
And sometimes it's, it's the library gets stuff for a summer program.
Very nice.
I may do something, I mean, I may get three thousand for some, summer programs that are done.
Yeah, and now they have to apply, though, to be able to do that, so they have to, they have to know how to, or know to apply, yeah. I think that's, um, part of the problem, is people don't know what's out there, for one, and then. Also, in my experience of a lot of the different things that are out there, quote unquote, for cancer.
Yeah.
Survivors or dealing with whatever. It's either a one-time thing for like a hundred dollar grocery card or something, which is wonderful, right, but at the same time. You're dealing this for how long?
Yeah.
You know, and so, thank God we have things like that, but I've found a lot of it too, is. Saying that we can do that, but, but we can't, or it's the window for application is closed or.
That's one of the things that we, now, we insist that it's one time a year. And it's a twelve-month year, not twenty-twenty-four, you, Newcastle Police Department got a grant in June of twenty-four. They will not get another one in June of twenty-five.
Right.
Uh, the fire department's on December rotation.
Okay.
Uh, we try to split it out, we, we try very hard to be fair to our footprint, to the OEC footprint. Uh, Norman has a lot of, uh, welfare-related help places, uh.
Resources.
Yeah, and we, we help a lot of those.
Is there a list of the different organizations and things that you do help? Uh.
If it's a five oh one C, and in our footprint, you're eligible.
Okay.
And, and this, that does not mean automatic, or does it mean?
Right, you can apply though. Yeah.
We don't buy birthday cakes, we don't do, uh, religious organizations. We will, if a church has a food bank, that's called, uh, Woodland Hills Food Bank. We might give to it, but we won't give to Woodland Hills Baptist Church.
Things that are helping the community.
Yeah, we don't do, uh, political organizations of any shape, form, or fashion, but pretty much, if you're a nonprofit, you gotta have the paperwork. Gotta have a need, gotta be justified with need. The biggest thing we've ever done for an individual was ten grand, we put a new roof on a little old lady's house one time.
Is there anything in the pipe for Newcastle, planning-wise, or anything that, um, our, you know, residents and stuff can be, get super excited about?
Coming, an Indian hospital coming.
So where is that going in exactly? South Sixteenth? Right there on the corner, before you get to the Oaks, like, the entrance.
Other side, it's one.
Oh, on the Farmington side, really, right there by?
The stuff on the Oak side is housing.
Okay, okay, so it's gonna be right there in the, in the front of all those housing additions, Farmington addition. Next to, uh, Walker and Sons, yeah, okay.
Yep.
Interesting, when is that set?
Five years is what I'm hearing.
When it'll be open?
Yeah.
When are they supposed to start construction on it?
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know why, why they haven't started, for that matter, you know.
I had asked, uh, specifically about the old sports complex and about how, like, how Mustang has a community center. They've built around theirs and that kinda stuff, and, uh, you'd said that there are plans for that.
There was discussion on that, I don't know how far it got.
Okay, okay.
I'm not in the middle of that, so I really don't know, uh. I don't, Harry probably doesn't run it anymore.
I don't think so, I think a, a younger couple, I don't even think they were from this community maybe, but they maybe invested in it and were trying to.
I know there's, the city of Newcastle funds it somewhat.
Okay.
Now, it's not a fully funded thing, but there's some.
Maybe takes care of the landscaping and stuff.
I think it's a little bit more now, but again, it's a, um. When we passed a half-cent sales tax twenty years ago, seventy percent was roads. And thirty percent was for community projects. We built a new fire station and a new police station out of that thirty percent.
Very nice.
Uh.
And the shelter, maybe?
No, the shelter was a grant from the federal government.
Very nice.
Or state government, one of the two, but they figured out somewhere along the way that those don't make sense. Because the worst place to be during a tornado is on the road.
And everybody's driving there.
And if everybody's driving. And if everybody's driving there, traffic jam.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and then they uh, uh, on top of that, how do you turn people out? Yet it gets full.
Yeah.
Uh, you tell people, no, you can't have your cat. But here they come anyway.
Yeah.
Uh, it's my service animal, you know, you know, all four of them dogs are your, you know, safe menards are your. Um, I know the um, the tornado thirteen actually hit that building.
Really?
Yes, it came through the, the car edition there, you know, you.
Right.
Yeah, and took the bridge out.
That's right.
It hit that building and I know a, a friend of mine was in that building at the time. And he said that he was uh, he was three rows back from the, one of the walls. And what he means by that is everybody was standing and there was somebody here, there was somebody here and there was somebody here.
Wow.
And there was three people in front of him and the third person was nose to the wall. That's how packed in there there were, you know, way over every kind of legal standard that there was, but again, how do you turn people out?
Yeah.
Cause you're, the, the rules say each person has to have seven square foot, well, that's. What, are we gonna take a nap in here or what, you know? Uh, so instead of seven square foot, he had seven inches. But uh, he said when it hit, that building rocked and the wall shook, but.
How scary.
So, we, we made it, they, or since then, instead of spending. Hundred thousand dollars to build that, we'll give you two thousand, you two thousand, you two thousand and you dig you a hole in the ground and put you a shelter in your own.
Really? Okay, so there's a, a program for that, that you can apply for those things too?
That comes out every so often, I don't know where the, that's how I got mine, I got the storm shelter in the, in the garage right there.
With a grant?
And with a grant.
Very nice.
Uh, they, twenty-five hundred is what they paid for it, it cost me thirty-three.
Very nice.
So, but I got seven by five and it's just me and Nancy and I don't have to worry about. So-and-so bringing his dog or his alligator or whatever else.
Yes, any life lessons you've learned from either your time in the Navy or working with, you know, Newcastle City, City. Planning, City Council, or even at the Capitol, you know, that kinda stuff that I wasn't even aware of, um. That you would pass on to anybody curious of wanting to get in or not, or even, even totally outside.
Realize and accept and uh, take the responsibility of being a citizen of this country.
Yeah.
The state, the city, this county, it's great compared to the rest of the world.
Yes.
You know, uh, you could just as easily be in some, one of them funky Sibu Island Philippines. Or you could just as easily be in Gaza Strip. Uh, you're in pretty good shape right here, take responsibility for it, keep it in good shape.
Yeah, take care of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, you know, Jake and I were talking the other day, my brother, about. Oh, just how kinda out of touch people seem nowadays and how watered down everything is and. How people with morals and character and you know, that kinda stuff seem to be radical and you know. Kinda far out there.
A lot of it's caused by that idiot thing right in there.
Yeah.
Television.
Yes, exactly, it is, it absolutely is, and I was telling him how. Like some people get so offended with, you know, strong morals and character and that kinda stuff and, and even ourselves with dad sometimes, like. Gosh, come on, man, relax a little bit, you know what I mean, kinda stuff, but then I think to myself too, like, thank God we have people like that.
Yeah.
Because if we didn't, how watered down would everything be like? Yeah, how far would it go?
He's an anchor holding us from going over.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
And I get very frustrated at, at the next generation, so to speak. And I mean that from, to you and to your kids even.
Yeah.
Because uh, I, I feel that. Yeah, morals is, is, this used to be wrong and that, and then it went from wrong to, well, it's no big deal to. It's uh, not only not wrong, it's not no big deal, but it's mandatory that you do it now.
Right, yeah.
That is a rainbow float out there that has nothing to do with the Rainbow Coalition or anything. It's a float that used to have two uh, clouds on each end of it.
Uh-huh.
White, big, puffy clouds, but the wife likes the size of it and she cut the clouds off. But I can't take any pictures of anybody out by the pool, cause that rainbow's gonna be in the middle of it.
Can you stand for something that you don't? Isn't that a shame that they take symbols like that and bastardize all of it, yeah.
It is.
Yeah, well, gosh, even, I mean, this is such a taboo subject, but even Hitler, the swastika, like that literally was a symbolism, symbol of peace. For years and years and years before he used it as something really horrible.
Yes, and it, you know, Indians. Uh, Indians here, not Indians in Germany.
Right, yeah.
And, and like you said, he, he stole it, it is a symbol and that's what you will think the first time you see it.
Yeah, that's really awful, yeah.
And uh, uh, it's just. Uh, I'm like you, it's just, he- here was a pretty thing and now I can't, can you say it, cause it's a.
Yeah.
Multicolored float, you know, rainbow, now it's multicolored.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Um, any favorite stories of your time in the Navy that kinda resonate with you today? And or how do those experiences compare to the work you're doing in our community?
Besides the travel, which I totally enjoyed all of that stuff, uh. I met some of the best people that I ever knew. Working alongside them in the Navy.
Yeah.
And several of them I stay in constant contact with now.
Wes being one of them.
Wes being one of them.
Yeah.
You know, um, meeting Wes, so I met his older brother first.
Okay.
Randy, and then uh, Wes came on board and Wes worked directly with me, so I got to know him. And uh, here we are forty-five years later and I can tell you what his favorite color is.
Yeah, yeah, inseparable, yeah.
And uh. Yeah, a few other people, and I probably, uh. I graduated high school fifty-one years ago and I know where one person I graduated with is.
Really?
I left the Navy forty-five years ago, forty-four years ago, and I know where several of those guys are.
Yeah.
You know.
Camaraderie.
Yeah, um.
Lifelong connection.
I uh, in fact, that old high school buddy that I know of and I haven't talked to him in forever. His wife just died, I saw her obituary, just like yesterday, uh, two days ago. She was sixty years old.
Goodness, it's, I, I, I mean, I'm sure, I, I know, I, hopefully, God willing, I'll experience uh, losing. People a- at your age, you know what I mean, um, and just, but it's, it's. It's undescribable when you're kinda facing your own mortality, you know what I mean, like here I am doing it at forty-four, right, twenty years.
But you know.
Before you guys.
It, the old story, what doesn't kill you makes you stronger.
Absolutely.
Is a fact.
It is.
And until somebody looks at you and says cancer, you don't understand that.
Yeah, yeah, and isn't, you know, one of the things that's been so eye-opening to me is like. Yeah, this was the worst of the worst of anything that I've been through and had to overcome and deal with, right, pain and all the things.
Everything.
And then I think about all the people that are older than me that have had to deal with, like people in their eighties that are going through cancer and the. Pain that they're experiencing and we look at these people that are older and the elderly as.
And a lot of them are living by themselves at the time, because the spouse has passed away already.
Yeah, and we see them as being so fragile and so vulnerable and, man, they're the toughest people alive, but like.
I have an aunt that's, that uh, she's eighty-five, eighty-six, I'm along there. And ever since she was thirty, has been having something. And uh, you know, and she might be clean for five years and then up pops a tumor somewhere, you know. And uh, the fact, and her husband, he was a dirtbag anyway. She got real sick. Uh, lost any uh, through surgeries and everything else, a lot of. Lot of her femininity went away.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
The hormone, you know, the whole crap. And he went from having an affair to openly having an affair to uh, bragging about his affairs. And, and just beating her down emotionally that whole time, you know. Uh, you're fat, you're, you're ugly, you're uh, you know, I don't want you. Uh, I'm going out with Suzie here. And uh, she's out with him, he, they divorced and when they split. She had, she ended up getting a house, but she had nine hundred dollars and she was fifty years old.
Wow.
Period, nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
The end, no, no income and no nine hundred dollars.
Yeah.
And she was able to keep the house and she's able, she got a job, for a while she worked just at like convenience stores. Doing that stuff, you know, minimum wage stuff, so, but then she went and took a computer class on how to operate a computer. Got on at a, a insurance company. Data entry, mouse and then whatever, you know, and uh, spent twenty-something years from. Fifty-five to seventy-five, almost eighty, uh, having a job for the first time in her life.
Wow.
Because he wouldn't let her have a job, he didn't think she should work out in the house, she needed to stay home.
Goodness gracious.
Uh, so, you know, it took her a long time to get over all that and all of this, this, the way she was treated by the husband. And then throw the cancer on top of it.
Yeah, probably why she had cancer.
Yeah. Well, it's the same reason I got cancer, though it's in that bloodline of ours. It uh, it's, it's thick on that side of the family.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm not the first of this generation, I'm the second of this generation to get cancer. One of my cousins got it before I did and uh, her son. And um, was twenty-two or three. She's about uh, three years younger than I am, so this, he, she would've been fifty and he was twenty-five. And both of them were going through cancer at the same time, he died from it. So.
Goodness.
And she, her, her and Nancy ironically is, my aunt's name is Nancy, were going through a lot of the same stuff. You know, the surgeries, the, the chemo, the, the hormones, all of that crap that you know, that, that. That you have to deal with.
Yeah.
And uh, it's.
You know, of all of it, as bad as it was, not that I wanna do it again, but you can. You can, you can get through it, we don't realize how resilient, resilient we are, how resilient our bodies are, how.
Uh, susceptible to colds and things like that.
I never have really been, so I was for years growing up and like all through high school, every couple of.
Kind of stuff.
Uh, no, no, never as a kid, but um, I would have sinus infections regularly growing up. And then it turns out, after I got older and just started, I don't know, using my brain. Instead of listening to everyone, I figured out that if I would start taking allergy medicine, right when I started feeling like I would have a. Come down with a sinus infection, then I would never get a sinus infection. And so I think all of those years, it was just, you know, allergies so bad that it progressed and uh.
I'm convinced that we got the worst allergies in the world out here.
Yeah, yeah.
And we got the wind blowing it, so you got stuff coming from Nebraska.
Yeah.
One day and then Mexico the next.
Right, exactly, yeah, yeah, it's a little inevitable, yeah, yeah, for sure. But no, and that was one of the things that everyone kept telling me too, is as healthy as you are, you'll do just fine. And I'm thinking to myself, how can, how can you say I'm healthy, but I have. Stage four metastatic incurable cancer, how does that, that doesn't, my, that messes with my brain. Just the craziest thing.
How can I have cancer and I feel fine? I, I, you know, I had no, nothing.
Yeah.
And the first time it was found was mistake, I don't wanna say mistake, by fluke, that's a better word, I had a crack in my neck. I had a crack in my neck that I just couldn't get rid of, I hot water bottled and, and bengaded and everything else and I just. I had this crack in my neck, so I finally went to the doctor and I said, it's been a while since I've been here anyway, so let's do the full checkup. You got blood in your urine, here, take these pills, come back in two weeks, you still got blood in your urine, here, take this and come back in two weeks, mm. Go see this doctor, uro- urologist. And he comes and does the thing and he says, I'll try this, come back in two weeks, I'm still got. So he does a more in-depth examination and he says, you got cancer. You go, me? You sure? Check that, make something, you know? And uh, I had the stage two at that point and uh, cut it out and sewed me back up. Fine, so I'll be walking down the road and every three months I'm getting a checkup and then it was every six months I'm getting a checkup. I can't wait till he tells me I won't have to come back and then instead of saying he, he got cancer again.
Yeah.
Go wait, wait, we, we fixed that, you know?
Yeah.
And it, I said, how in the world am I getting this stuff? And he said, you smoke? I said, no. He said, you work around chemicals? No. He said, you're just lucky. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kinda luck I need, partner.
Right, right, um, there's a book that I was given back in twenty. Fourteen-ish, I think it was, that was, it's called You Can Heal Your Life, it's a. Very non-religious metaphysical type, uh, what do you call it, like. Quantum physics, it's all about how your thoughts can influence your environment and your body.
Yeah.
And it talks, uh, in the back of it, it lists an index of every kind of ailment you've ever. You could ever think of that exists, right, like from any of the idises, right, anything that ends in itis, like.
Yeah.
Bronchitis, all the, you know, whatever, those ru- uh, rheumatoid arthritis, all of that stuff. Every element you can think of, and the metriosis even, then the female diseases I've dealt with, you know, all of, all of the things, but it'll tell you. The type of thoughts that created the problem and then the type of affirmations, if you will. Things to think and say to heal the problem, to overcome the problem. It's really interesting when you look at it and like, cause I'm a weirdo like that, I'm, I'm real curious about, about things. So I went back to all the different things that I've had to deal with, element-wise, physical issues. To see if there were any correlation, if any of it resonated, right, any of the, the thoughts and that kinda thing that were associated with those problems. And I'm telling you, almost every single one of them, it is unreal how much I can see the correlation.
Do you write my?
Yes, I mean, it's unreal and same thing, I've uh, you know, shared the book with several different people, men and women, mom. Even, one day I, I uh, looked up one of the ailments that she was dealing with, I don't know if it was. I think it was maybe diabetes or something like that and it, whatever it was, it talked about, um. Like thoughts of what might have been, what could have been type, type things and I think it was probably associated with like her dad dying so young.
See, I wondered this, cause the, when I, the first time I had the cancer, you know, and they cut the tumor out. Uh, somebody mentioned this and I took some, you know, but I wasn't religious about it, I just, you know, had something to tell you. Then the next time, I started taking pretty religiously. And I've been good for nine years.
Yeah.
Coincidence?
Right.
Or does it make a difference?
Exactly, yeah, exactly.
You know.
I know that had I started the um, holistic route that I was trying to do in the beginning, which most of that was. Motivated by how in the world am I supposed to work full-time in this aggressive industry and this aggressive job? And have go through cancer treatment, I don't know how this is supposed to work, I, I'm a single person, I don't, I'm gonna lose everything. I don't know how to do this, like, you know what I mean? Right, and finding second opinions and is there any other option, is there anything else that we can do, you know, that kinda stuff? And ultimately, ultimately, it came down to my, I, I had gotten so sick from December. Right around the first of December, right after Thanksgiving, I started being able, I wasn't, wasn't able to keep any food down. I couldn't, I couldn't eat, I could, I had this horrible burning feeling in my stomach and uh, I would throw up and it would be, it would alleviate it for a little bit. But maybe thirty minutes to an hour and here I would have this feeling again and the only thing that would alleviate it would be to throw up. And I sometimes couldn't even prevent the throwing up, you know, it was just so bad.
Not exactly the afternoon that you wanted.
No, especially not at work in the public restroom, you know what I mean, so. So anyways, from December, finally in February, the twentieth, um, from December to February, I had used up. So anyways, from December, finally in February the twentieth, um, from December to February, I had used up all of my leave. My sick leave, my, you know, vacation, everything, uh, from being so sick and didn't have, didn't have any other option and my job wouldn't. Work with me on the time, the days that I was too ill to come into the office, to maybe work from home or something like that, it was either take. Leave without pay or quit working or whatever, so thankfully, they had a short-term disability option and I went on that in February. But um, yeah, I don't know.
How long you been fat now?
So I was diagnosed in April of twenty-three.
So we're a year and a half.
We're a year and a half into it and then I was restaged in April of this year and that's when I started chemo and then um, the. Honestly, I I had a biopsy of this lump in two thousand and five, two thousand, yeah, two thousand and five up in DC. And it took me six months to even get them to look at it, I kept waking up with my hand on it, it would be right on the lump. And it was the weirdest thing, it was like a god thing, right, something's telling me, something is there, right? Yes, and so I went and told them and they told me I was crazy, cause my grandmother was going through breast cancer then, my, on the brown side. All in your head, all in her head, you know, and so for six months, this kept happening and finally I said, no, you're gonna do the exam this way. With me sitting up or either on my left side, which is when I would feel it, right, and at that point, she was, you know, panicking, oh god, we gotta do a biopsy. Immediately, let's do an ultrasound and then the biopsy and all that, and of course, it came back as benign, then nothing, nothing wrong with it, nothing to worry about. And then all these years, uh, you know, too young for mammograms, breast tissue too dense, all these things that, no, nothing, nothing, nothing. And family history, no mer- no worries about any of it, and then in twenty eighteen, I adopted this little dog. And it's a little dog, she's twelve pounds, right, a little morky, little lapdog, and we were laying in bed one night, I was watching TV, whatever. And for some whatever reason, she jumped up on my chest and put her paw right on the tumor. And I didn't know it was a tumor then, I didn't know anything about it, I just thought, oh man, that was sore, she really pounced on me, you know what I mean, like, gosh, well, it it never. Stopped hurting, like it was a bruise, you know what I mean, but this was months later, it's still bruised. Well, this time, I hadn't had health insurance since two thousand and twelve and this is twenty eighteen. And I needed it, I'd been really healthy, I had done a lot of different things, Plexus had gotten me, you know, to a a healthy point. Where I didn't have a lot of the autoimmune problems that I was dealing with anymore and I didn't need a doctor, I was still young and healthy, you know? Well, um, this just kept progressing, it never stopped, so at that point, I knew, okay, something's wrong, I need to get this checked out. And I. Sold out. I was an entrepreneur then, I was working for myself, I was doing marketing and social media for people, working from home and. Then I went through my divorce and decided I needed more stability in my life as far as income and insurance and those things go. So I went to work full-time and um, it took me a year to even really be able to go to the doctor, cause I didn't have any sick leave. I didn't time off, I had no, nothing. And I'm paying for insurance for a whole entire year and not getting to use any of it, you know what I mean, so finally, the next year rolls around, I have vacation and sick leave. If I can start getting things figured out and it just took that long to really get appointments and everyone kept, again, you're so healthy. They didn't believe me and, you know, all these things, it was just so frustrating trying to even get diagnosed and, and then once I did, of course, you know. The denial of how far along it was and the options, you're telling me, like, they were telling me from the beginning that I didn't have long. And you know, it was too aggressive and I couldn't do all the things that I was trying to do and, so that's how we ended up here, but.
And here you are, year and a half later and I won't say cured, but you're.
Yeah.
You know, cause I don't ever think we'll ever be cured.
No, I mean, just, we'll always be a cancer patient, right, we'll always be doing the, the checkups and the whatever. And it's always gonna be part of our lifestyle to have to be more diligent about our, our diet and things than others and, yeah, yeah. But, but yeah, defying all odds and I continue, I I I'm determined to to continue, you know, as long as God's willing.
Well, you know, and again, my love's getting out of this world alive.
It could happen, I can walk out and drive out here today, right, leaving here and it'd be over, yeah.
Then we get run over by a school bus, you know, I mean, that's, that's all there, but um. It it's just, I don't know, it's just weird to 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 face. The fact that you are mortal.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
And you hit it twenty years ahead, well, not twenty, fifteen years ahead of me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was fifty-nine.
Okay.
And literally bulletproof up to that point, wouldn't brag about the fact, I've never been sick.
Really?
Oh, I had chicken pox when I was a kid, but. Other than that, I ain't been sick.
Yeah.
Didn't miss a day of work with sick.
Yeah.
You know?
Same, yeah, yeah, and who knows, maybe all those years that, uh, so when I looked at cancer, it was a matter of uh, resentment. Something like that, that you haven't let, let go of, but if you look, you know, go deeper in the different types of cancers and different things, then they will mean, have different meanings. Um, so like breast cancer is and uh, always taking care of others and not taking care of yourself, like not putting yourself first and. Doing the things you need to do to.
You know, I'm not gonna say that's wrong, but I'm gonna say that a lot of that, uh, there is a family, it is inherited.
Yeah.
I am the umpteenth generation to have cancer.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, my mother was thirty-five when she died.
Wow.
Uh, her dad was sixty-seven when he died.
Wow.
He had some cancer I did.
Really?
Just mom was caught before him, and it was nineteen seventy-five for him and twenty fifteen for me.
All the medical advances and.
Uh, you know, so, uh, the. You can just chase it back and, you know, this, this, this aunt, this cousin, this whatever, right, that they're.
Yeah.
Uh, my, my maternal grandfather, there was. Seven kids. All seven of them died of cancer.
Wow.
Now, one of them. I don't know, I'll, I'm gonna take it back, one of them I know smoked and drank and partied and all this other kinda wild stuff and. And uh. His lifestyle.
Contributed.
Contributed highly to it, but some of the others didn't.
Yeah.
As far as I know, I don't, two of them, I didn't know, two of the sisters, they died when I was either really young or even before I was born. And I didn't know them, but the others I knew, I mean, uh, best of my knowledge didn't smoke. Uh, or work around chemicals or any of them kinda things that, you know, um, but all of them died of cancer.
Did they all live closely in the same vicinity or all kinda all over the place?
Seventy mile circle, yeah.
Interesting, it's so interesting to see how.
And yet. Those seven kids' mother was buried on her ninety-fourth birthday.
See?
Those seven kids, that the oldest one was in his sixties, or her sixties. Mother was buried on her ninety-fourth birthday.
Wow, that's wild.
You know?
I don't think we'll ever know.
So.
One way or another.
Now, her husband, the father of those seven kids, he did basically drink himself to death.
Did he ca- have cancer?
Think so, I think he was a liver cirrhosis type deal.
Yeah, interesting.
Um. And it was, it wasn't a few beers a day or six pack a day, it was. A fifth of whiskey a morning, you know? And another one in the afternoon type deal, so, I mean, from what I've gathered, that, uh, I I never met him neither, he died when I was. Six months old or some kinda crap like that, but they said that the people used to drive up and throw him out on the. The yard and leave.
Drive up and throw, oh, because he was drunk and so they were given.
Yeah, his running buddies, where, you know, they've all been out partying, they just drop him off by throwing him out on their yard.
Right.
Your grandma pick him up out the yard in the morning.
Anything that you'd like to share, discuss that we haven't covered? Anything, when I said, hey, you wanna do a podcast, what popped into your mind?
Well, I I really thought that we was gonna kinda do a little history Newcastle story, then you said, no, we're just gonna talk about stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so the theme of my po- podcast, if you will, it's called Random Thoughts Some Useful. So, that's kinda, it's kinda what it's about, I I interview people in different. Industries or interests or whatever and, and just, you know, if there's any life hacks, any, anything that you could give. Somebody to empower them to, to.
There is a God and he is alive, he's in control, deal with that first, accept that first. And then realize what you can do to make it better.
Right.
And go from there.
How you can work with that, what's in, within your control to, to reach your goals and do good in life?
I. I'm a firm believer in uh, reading, educating yourself. I'm a firm believer in not necessarily knowing everything, but knowing somebody who knows about a particular subject. There's no way you're gonna know everything.
Right, yeah.
But if I have a, uh. Carpentry question, I know somebody I can call, if I've got a engine, if my car's making funny noises, I call Gary Brown.
Right.
Gary, listen to this, what is that?
Yeah, exactly.
I like the car making a funny noise.
Yeah, yeah, knowing when to call in an expert.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And except, don't be afraid to call for help.
Yeah, yeah.
And it's fixing your car or fixing your life.
Exactly.
You know?
Yeah.
None of us can do it all and we all need help.
Yeah, yeah, is there anything in your, from your military career that you could pass on to any other uh, veterans or active duty? Or, you know, military guys that could help them in their career, I mean, even like you just said, fixing your life, you know? I'm I'm a huge advocate of mental health and and doing what you need to do to make sure that you're good.
Uh, health period, if you feel bad, cause you're uh, physically sick. You don't have, you're not gonna be productive.
Yeah.
If you're mentally off, you're not gonna be productive.
Yeah.
Uh, I think probably realizing that you're mentally off may be a harder thing to discover. Than physically ill, but uh, there is help, get it.
Yeah.
If you're spiritually not well, get help.
Yeah.
Uh, two hundred years from now, only one of those gonna make a difference and that's your spiritual health.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, um. I would, uh, for any young military guy. Uh. Study, make the rank, the more rank you got, the the easier the world is. Uh, if you're gonna lay around and whine about the fact that you have to sweep the floor again, then. Get ranked so you can find somebody else sweep the floor.
Yeah, your focus is all wrong.
Yeah.
You're focused on. Instead of what you can do to get out of it.
Get out of it, um, I was very, very lucky, I entered a field in the Navy that advancement was super quick. Pretty much all you had to do is raise your hand and then, okay, it'll be the next one, uh.
What was that?
I was a data systems technician, a DS, it was a computer tech, electronics repair. And uh, of course, back in a hundred and twenty years ago, when I was there, the uh, computer was the size of a refrigerator.
Exactly.
And the hard drive was the size of two refrigerators, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, and in a different room, I mean, you know, it wasn't like it's all one little thing.
Right, building just for the computer.
Yeah, and uh. I made E-six in six years, where I went to work daily with people who. When I first got there, they outranked me, then I called up to them and then I passed them. Because they didn't do what they had to do to, to advance.
Right.
And. I would tell everybody to take advantage of every school, every opportunity in advance that they can. And find, if they don't like what they're doing, find a different one, something to do.
Yeah.
I found one thing I thought was gonna be fun and it wasn't and I, there's a reason I'm not in police work today.
Really?
I did three months of police work and uh.
Found out real quick.
I don't like dealing with stupid people.
I agree with that.
I can't hear he. He's stupid, he needs to be here.
Yeah, it's too difficult, goodness, is there anything about Tennessee that you miss or has Newcastle fully kinda?
Oh, the mountains and the waterfalls and stuff, yeah. Yeah, I uh, several waterfalls that I know that when I'm back there, that, and the wife and the kids, I've been to them too. And sometimes Jason will go even without me, you know, it's just peaceful.
How often do you get to get back?
Twice a year, give or take.
Yeah, yeah.
I can go back more, but. I miss that, I miss uh, uh, you know, some of my old friends and stuff, but. Said, they're, they're all, they're all moving off in their own world, I don't know where they're at anymore, but, but I've. Friendship wise, responsible, community wise, I'm here, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, I miss my family some, but, you know, I mean, that's. Especially with today's modern technology, I can FaceTime any one of them anytime I want to.
Yeah.
You know, uh, matter of fact, it's so easy to communicate that we don't have anything to say to each other, cause we don't say it.
Yeah, yeah, that's so true. Um, besides the responsibility of voting, like we talked about, is there anything else that you could say to the residents of Newcastle? Tri-city, this this area, um, that would best support the city council's efforts or, you know, just the community? Anything particular?
Encourage your council member.
Okay, okay, get to know them?
Yeah, uh, you know, they deal with a lot of the public that's mad.
Yeah.
And sometimes the public don't, that person doesn't even know why they're mad, they just, because they heard that something was gonna happen. And well, the hospital's coming in and all of a sudden, uh, well, prime example, a real true story. When the power plant was being built thirty years ago. I had a guy come up to me and said he opposed the power plant because of the radiation. I said, what radiation? He said, that nuclear power plant they're putting over there.
Uninformed, they don't know.
It's not a nuclear power plant.
Yeah.
That's not what it is.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I was told it was.
Yeah, yeah, not just talk to hearsay, find out from the horse's mouth for yourself and make an informed decision.
He was adamant, that was a nuclear power plant.
And he was probably spreading that to the rest of the community that he was in contact with them.
He's mad, cause they put in that nuclear.
Well, and you see the same thing today, I mean, the way that people vote based off of misinformation, all to, all the time, yeah. So be informed for sure, encourage your council members and be informed, do the best you can to be informed.
And yours, your state reps will be glad to know you.
Okay.
You know, you can, the capital ain't that far, and when they're in session, you can drive up there and say hi to them.
Yeah, really say hi to them.
Yeah.
Really just go in and say, hey, I just was in there, just wanted to come and say hi and introduce myself.
How many of them even know who their state senator is right now?
Exactly, yeah.
Uh, she was just uh, defeated of her bid for reelection, but she is still your state rep right now, state senator right now.
Huh, yeah, I don't even know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, you would have a different one than me, cause you're on the side of the camera line.
Right, 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 okay.
It's, it's where, right here where we're at, uh, where Newcastle's at, the state representative's district. Is runs east to west, it's not very tall, it's very wide, the state senator. Is very tall, but not very wide, it runs north and south.
Huh.
A representative goes from Newcastle to Slaughterville, the other side of Noble.
Yeah.
The state senator goes from Newcastle to Duncan.
Wow.
You know, this.
Yeah.
And it's.
Probably good that they designed it that way, cause it overlaps, but still, they're different.
But yet, you get different angles from different views, yeah.
Yeah, huh.
Our state senator lives in Duncan.
Really?
Yeah.
Huh, yeah, I bet, well, I mean. Just myself, I feel like I am maybe a little more um, knowledgeable and involved or have been in the past than most. But still, I don't know, I don't have a clue, you know what I mean, I wouldn't feel comfortable going to the Capitol and introducing myself to our senator. Why, why would he wanna know me, what, he's got other things that are much more important and, you know, that's kinda how I would feel about it, so intimidated by it. If you will, so I'm sure there are plenty of other.
It's harder to get into, actually shake hands with the governor, but if you wanna do that, we can do that too.
Yeah, huh, very interesting, yeah, more people, well, and too, it's, I think it's hard for people to. Step outside of what's going on in their life to realize that, hey, this is needed, you need to do this, we we need people that.
And, yeah, and understand that they may be up there, their job is to go up there and represent from Newcastle to Duncan, this area right here. McLean County, Garvin County, I'm not Garvin, maybe a little bit of Garvin, I'm not sure anyway, and um, Stevens County. And um Stevens County, something great, Crady in there, you know? Uh, that's their job. But yet over here, sitting next to them is somebody whose job is to represent Woodward to slap out. That's a completely different world than what we're dealing with. And next to them is somebody who's going from Podo to Muskogee.
Completely different. It's funny, like, like, there's so many, we think that there are so many different um accents and areas of the world. Like, you know, the east and west coast and how different they are, but we have the same differences within our own state or your, our own communities sometimes.
Garvin and Idaho are two completely different places, but they're both from Oklahoma.
Right, different issues, different needs, different, okay, that's a great segue. So in um, well, today, how crazy the world is, changing, facing new challenges every day. What is one lesson or principle from your life experiences, whether in the Navy, Newcastle or beyond? That you believe is the most crucial for people to embrace today to navigate these times successfully?
There's faith.
Faith. I would completely agree. It comes, this whole journey has come down to one thing. My belief.
And the more that you uh, accept the responsibility of, of, of what is your responsibility in.
And what isn't?
Turn over what is not what you can handle.
Yeah, the prayer of serenity, yeah, yeah. That's memo. Anytime I ever had any kind of challenge, something, you know, frustration, anything like that, if I ever had the privilege of visiting with her about it. That's exactly what she would say to me. Prayer of serenity. She would start reciting that. Wisdom's no the difference, yeah. And it's huge, it really is. I mean, we can really get, and I think that's maybe part of. Um, some of the intimidation too is like, okay, well, what, what can I control? What can I make a difference in? What, what, what is my business? What isn't, you know?
And sometimes you won't know you make the difference. There's somebody along the way in your life that, that walked by, he patted you on the head and said, yes, you can, and you went off and did. And had they not done it, you might have n- not ever done that, you know?
And encouragement goes such a long way, like it really does.
It does, uh, you know, an insult will knock a person down, an encouragement will pick them up. And which would you rather be if it was you? I'd rather be picked up than knocked down.
Yeah, and treat people the way you wanna be treated.
And uh, so, yeah. And when you knock somebody down, you better be looking over your shoulder because they may get up.
Well, this has been great. I've really enjoyed every minute of it. I, I think it's been awesome. I've got, you know, opened up some, some doors that I never even knew anything about. I think it's very cool.
I wanna show you one picture here. It just, irony, whatever else you wanna stick in there, just unreal, almost there. There it is. All right, this picture right here, this is the basketball team in the late thirties, probably thirty eight or thirty nine season. All right, these two guys, remember this nineteen thirty eight, thirty nine timeframe. These two guys graduated high school in nineteen forty. He joins Marines, he joins the Navy. They meet up again in the Philippines on Corregidor. They, look, a few people were talking about here. These two, General MacArthur has left and gone to Australia. And, you know, with the promise I shall return there in the Philippines. Japan has taken over all the Philippines except for a little island in the middle of Manila Bay. Both of them are there, Corregidor.
That's incredible.
They get to visit one another briefly. And uh, then the next day, sometime during May the. Fifth nineteen forty two, uh, this Marine is in his foxhole and a Japanese shell explodes near him. And it blows dirt up and it buries him alive. He dies.
Oh my goodness.
This guy will spend the next three and a half years in a Japanese prisoner of war camp. All of the, you know, what are the odds of them two being there?
Yeah, and sitting right next to each other in that photo.
On top of that, they're not one here, one there. You're right, they're right next to one another. This guy lived across the street from the high school, what was kind of the, the town park in nineteen forty. You know, between where the high school is and the post office is, all those older houses in there, that's where he lived. He was at the corner, he was a country boy. He was at the corner of Country Club and uh Southwest Sixteenth.
Oh, wow, right at the start of the Oaks.
Yeah, he was on the north, I mean, northeast corner. His family had eighty acres right there. So that's where he grew up in.
That's incredible.
But what I want you to read here, while as a prisoner of war.
Really?
He wrote that about his buddy.
Did he die in?
He got out. I actually met him, talked to him. We became friends.
Wow, baffling to, to think of all the people that have experiences, their story will never be told, right?
Exactly.
Why isn't there a statue ten feet tall placed in the middle of our hometown?
Cause other than me and you, we're about the old ones and even though it existed, even though I tell it every chance I get. Obviously, uh, wrote it in the book.
How crazy.
We did make Veterans Park, Veterans Park.
Right, Veterans Park, that's great. And they have, I haven't actually been to it.
Name Veterans Park.
Did you? Good job. I haven't been to the one, uh, the memorial in Blanchard.
It's impressive.
Is it? I've drove by it. Jesse moved over there, just a couple, like a block from there. Um, but I, and I drive by it o- often and see people. I need to stop and, and take a look at it. Believe to be the first soldier in Newcastle killed in World, World War Two.
Which was the first one of any war. We didn't have anybody in World War One, you know, we'd have been ten people here then. Yeah, he was the first. The other guys died, plane crashes and, and stuff, but. But the fact that those two were set by each other. He's a real, real skinny dude because he's been a Japanese prisoner of warfare. Paul Albert Bell was six foot two and weighed ninety pounds when he got, he got it. He said there at the end of the war, they were all made to speak Japanese, learn Japanese and speak Japanese. And uh, one of the Japanese guards told him, he said, uh, America's got a big bomb. He didn't know what this talk about. He said, well, we'll go up here to these mountains and hide from that bomb. And that guard goes, you can't hide from this one. He had no idea what he's talking about. It wasn't, they had a bomb, is what it was. Yeah, and he dropped the second one and Angles, I quit. He said, uh, they woke up and a couple of days later and there wasn't a Japanese guard anywhere. It wasn't a Japanese civilian, wasn't a Japanese soldier, it wasn't Japanese anywhere around. They had no idea where the rat. You gotta understand that, you know? They're under clothed, underfed, he's six foot two, weighs ninety pounds. Underinformed, they don't know, they know which way is north or south. They know that America, uh, they assume America has won the war. Because of where the battles have been fought at. They were fought at Midway, then they were fought in Okinawa, you know? At no time was there a fight in San Francisco or Denver. So, uh, and the fact that nobody's around them and what the Japanese have just told them, they felt good about. But they, they had no idea what to do. There's nobody here. If we go out this way, are we gonna get shot then if we walk down that way? Uh, is somebody coming to get us? Does anybody even know we're here? Does anybody care? And he said, uh, 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 Air Force plane, well, Army Air Corps at that time, fly us over and dropped uh, uh, supplies down to them. K rations and stuff of that nature. He said, they partied big time on that stuff. But, I mean, there they sit, just, and you don't even realize, what do you do? Don't know.
And this is after they dropped the bomb?
After the second bomb.
Really? They survived that?
Yeah, they weren't near the bomb.
Near it, okay.
They were far enough away, obviously, but they were in Japan in a prisoner of war camp. When the bombs went off.
And so they just abandoned them or what?
They left.
Just wars over, okay?
Yeah, here's that picture I was looking for. That's MacArthur signing and the skinny guy right behind him, right there. That's General, that's one surrender. Paul Albert Bell captured and spent the next three and a half years in a Japanese prisoner of war camp.